All right, it is six o'clock. And we'd like to go ahead and start our city council meeting for December sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Let us please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
As a reason, to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Let us prepare ourselves in whatever way you see appropriate. Most gracious and heavenly Father Lord, we come to this day to say thank you, oh Father God. We thank you for another city council meeting, oh Lord. Lord, we thank you for this is the last meeting in twenty twenty four, oh Father God, that we will be here. And we ask, oh Father God, that you bless us to go into twenty twenty five at one, oh Father God, in one accord, oh Father God, to move the city of North Chicago forward, oh Lord. Lord, we ask that you continue to bless and keep each and every one that is here, those that have wished to come and those that have wished to be president but were not able to. Lord, we just ask as we move into a new year that you continue to watch over and bless the city of North Chicago. This is my prayer and your darling son Jesus' name it for his sake.
Amen.
Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Present.
All right, uh, first thing we have today is, uh, four dash one is public hearing to approve a proposed tax levy in the amount of twelve million, four hundred and eighty seven thousand, two hundred and twenty nine dollars. Uh, Tawanda. Oh. I'm just, I'm sorry, can we call the, uh, hearing to order? Uh, could we get a roll call?
We need a motion, right? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I love it.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Yeah.
All right, and now the hearing. When they're ready. Tawanda.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Council. Um, we're here for you today for our fiscal year twenty twenty four or tax year twenty twenty four levy. Um, we did go over the presentation last week, um, but we just wanted to go over it for anyone that had any uh, further questions about it. Um, again, just as the mayor stated, uh, the tax levy at this point, there was a proposed decrease uh, to our tax rate. Um, it went down from, uh, four point seven nine five to four point six zero fifty one. Just to give, um, some our residents a little bit, and this again, this is only for the city portion of the tax bill does not include, um, any other taxing bodies that's in the community.
Are there any questions? From the council? Alderman January?
Thank you, um, during your presentation, um, you were showing a bunch of numbers in our last meeting. And I'm specifically looking at the library board because I do know that we owe them one million dollars still. But we are taking about three, probably a minimum three hundred thousand out of their budget from the revenue, from the tax revenue. So can we explain why we're doing that?
Absolutely. So.
Because they really, we should not be taking any money from them. I just wanted to state that it's really important. Our books are behind. We need new books. We need new, um, audio stuff to work with the children, more computers for the children. And we're going to take money away from that. So I need a clarification as to why we're taking money away from the potential continual education and assistance to our children in our community.
Okay, sure. Okay, so about August of twenty twenty four, we were, we receive a notice from the library stating that the city owes them a million dollars, as you stated. Um, in the past, we've never, um, this is regards to PPRT, which is called pro- uh, personal property replacement tax. Um, there are some municipalities that are required to pay the, the library a certain percentage of that amount. Again, at the time when we received that notification, this is the first notification that we've received in regards to this. And then just keep in mind, this goes back to nineteen eighty, uh, is when they were trying to collect from. Again, there was discussion with our legal on whether this is something the city was even obligated to pay. Um, there's still a little bit of discussion about that. However, um, after having a discussion with the library, we did explain to them that we would be, you know, more than willing to go ahead and accommodate them, um, based off, um, our statute of five years for the last five years and then the current fiscal year, so it would be a total of six years. Um, the issue that we have with that is that this is not money that the city was aware of that we owed. Um, so in essence, we didn't have anything set aside to pay them for that portion. Uh, and so what happens with the, the library, state statute allows for us to pay them fifteen cents on a, a dollar, I guess, is, is how you want to say it. And that state requirement, anything above that is something that the city, um, basically does by utilizing our home rule status. And for the last, um, I went back to twenty twenty sixteen, we have always gone way and beyond, beyond the, uh, the fifteen cent requirement that's for the library. And so what our, after having a discussion with the library again, we just say, we decided that what we would do is we would pay them the PPRT money. However, we would make it up in a tax levy. So in essence, there's no loss to income for them. They're still going to receive the same amount that they received last year. Instead of it coming directly from the property taxes, it would come from a combination of both two, of both the PPRT plus the, plus the tax levy. And so they would still get the same amount of money from, that they were receiving in the prior years.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none from the council? Uh, anyone for the public? Is there any public comments? Questions? Alderman January or Alderman? Former Alderman. You have to slip up.
Can you come to the mic, hon?
Uh, citizens and, uh, city council. I understand what our councilor said, and that was kind of eloquent, but it's still based on the facts that in our city of North Chicago, our kids are behind. So when you take money from a body, I don't care if it's actual money or not actual, we need to be giving the library more because our school district doesn't have coding, doesn't have viable things for fifty year olds like me that may or may not know Chat GPT and all these other programs that Waukegan and Zion are doing. How do we do this? How do we take from the kids? That doesn't make sense. And it really doesn't make sense for a library to be open during a school year when the kids are at school. This, it's cold outside. In our community, that library should, should be open till nine o'clock every day. If we don't have coding at the school and we don't have these programs at the school, we could do collaborative efforts, that means library and, uh, school district, put something together so our citizens can be educated. There's no ESL, English as a Secret Language program in our city, our city. It's a lot of stuff that's not here. City council, stop letting, it's not just the mayor. I, I understand that we have budgets and stuff that we have to deal with. But when it comes to our children and our adults and we're not educating or we're not being educated like the rest of the communities surrounding us, we need, we need to put our foot forward, not step backwards. And it's real, it's real important for me to say that because I don't see a lot of programming for North Chicago kids. I don't see STEM for North Chicago. I don't see any of the programs that we're a member of National League of City. All you all have been up here, we're a member of that. I don't see any programs in North Chicago for that. I don't see K through twenty one, I don't see K through anything for us. Please stop letting them take away from us. A levy, yes, a levy important taxes, we got all these different taxing bodies and it's killing us. For a three by four city, doesn't make the sense to have all these things. Doesn't make sense to have a separate library. Doesn't make sense to have a separate school board. These things don't make sense. It just doesn't make sense. And we need to stop and reevaluate. These little kids, if you don't give them things to do, they building a brand new jail and the stock market tickets getting larger for more places to house us. Go down to the Lake County, Billy Downtown Waukegan, the jail, you'll see black and brown all day. And it's not getting bad, it's getting worse. Lot of things are happening. We need to hold, we need to start making sense of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Right here. Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, I got, of course, a few of them. We talking about this tax levy, um, what percentage are we increasing? Are we staying up, uh, below the five? So what, what percentage are we at now?
Uh, we were, last year's levy was at four point seven nine five and now we're dropping to four point six, uh, six one.
Okay. I know that the state only require us to make a public notice, you know what I mean? Or put it on a ballot when we go over the five point percent. I understand that, but I don't think this community understand that. Seriously. Again, have we noticed the harm that we've for the cause? Have we thought of any other strategic ways to bring revenue into the city? Let me finish, mayor.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm sitting here and I'm wondering, I know years ago the city did a lot of bad businesses. I know half of what the military, where they live at, none of their taxes go into us. We just sold a lot of the property and we got businesses up in here that just own the land now. But I'm asking, you are the men and you are the women. How many town halls have you guys had with your constituents about this tax levy? About this increase?
Well, 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 but we're decreasing the taxes.
I, I understand what you're saying, mayor. I, I. It's still happening, right?
Well, that's a.
Where, i- it's great, but, but where's the money, mayor?
No, 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 no.
What, let me finish. What, what's, what's happening in the city? What do we have? We don't have a pharmacy, we don't have a grocery store. We have nothing. Nothing. So anytime I hear taxes, again, I'm saying to these aldermen, have you guys did any town halls to have a conversation with the people that have elected you to sit in these seats? That's my number one concern. I'm in a bus agenda. See, a lot of money get passed through that, but we don't know that because y'all don't explain anything to us. And I ain't talking about the mayor. I'm talking to my older men and women. I appreciate this decrease. But again, y'all need to start explaining to us where exactly is our taxes going? What are we doing? Where is it being spent? My seniors got to drive all the way to another town to go to a grocery store and do a pharmacy. Where is the money?
Anyone else? Now, this is, this is during the tax levy, we still have public comment. That's, that'll be coming up in a little bit. So this is just for our tax during our, uh, tax levy, okay? Just to, to make things, you're aware of where we're at, okay? So we're in a hearing to, to let the citizens of North Chicago know that we got a, a, our tax levy that is out there and that, uh, actually, it's, it's going to decrease our taxes overall. Yes.
Well, sometimes I get what, Mr. Ram, um, Carmisir Harton, Commissioner Carmisir Harton, and I just want to speak in regards to the tax levy. So what I think that's not being said is when she explained the point fifteen, it doesn't show that the city went after twenty nine. State law says that, I guess, the entity of libraries, they only get fifteen, that point fifteen. Well, because we're up under the city, they went after and got twenty nine, thirty three, thirty, all of those, and they accumulated a lot of money off of it, according to the data. And so even that with them saying we're being cut, it's not really a cut if they really see that they were actually gaining. The other library entities are not getting what we're getting because we're, we're up on the home state. And so that's the part that really needs to be explained so everybody can understand. We were only supposed to get point fifteen, but because we are, because the city is home state and we're up under them, they have went after twenty nine, they've gotten us twenty nine, thirty three, that's a nice amount of money. So even this thing that went on, she didn't go into detail about how far back, it's nothing in place saying that nobody was supposed to get it because before any of us got here, it was going on and nobody knew nothing about it, nobody was giving it. So it's not like somebody was actually taken away. It wasn't like somebody was like, oh, we hiding this money from you, nobody knew. So I think that, that, those are the things that need to be stated. Nobody knew when the, when it was brought to the attention to the city, then they handled the situation and they're not being cut. The, the library is doing well and they're, they're rectifying, they're actually giving money, that one million that we're talking about. Let's talk about how much money because we were, because actually we wouldn't have got that much if we wasn't up under the city. So that's the facts, that's the data. This not is what, it's not here safe. If you look at the data and if they put it up there, we all can understand it because I have to get, I have to get, get to understand it because it wasn't making sense. So, and that's all.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay. Anything else as far as? Tawanda, is that, that it? Are you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay, entertain a motion to adjourn. Uh, the, the public hearing. Yeah, yeah, I'm out of here. It was, it was moved by Alderman Allen's second by second. Alderman Smith, that the public hearing be, uh, closed. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Uh, motion carried. Okay, uh, moving on, omnibus vote agenda.
Not rocking him.
Alderman Allen.
Make a motion approved, omnibus vote agenda five dash one through five dash five as presented, second.
We move by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the omnibus vote agenda be passed as presented. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, now it is public comment. Is? Deborah Richards?
Good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Uh, council members. I'm here again requesting an answer on why the mayor and city council have denied me the opportunity to have a street sign. There are different forms of harassment. And from the actions of this council over the past several months, it appears as if I am falling into one of the categories. I have been humiliated at each meeting with no answers. Why? The mayor and the council have tried to nullify my rights, totally ignoring me as if I have no use or value. When this type of harassing behavior becomes repetitive, it is not good. All I asked was for a sign and even included my father, Reverend Jesse Wallace, to be on with me. I was told by the mayor that no one has ever been turned down, but I have stood before you in every council meeting from September third until today and have received nothing but rejection. I was even asked of the city council and the mayor. So my request would not come up. It, it's been thrown out, nobody, it's just been thrown out. So I come every week knowing that you've taken it off and I still want to know why. But no one will speak up. I basically feel I know why, but I want someone to tell me. No one else has ever, ever endured anything like this, so why me? This humiliation has caused undue distress, my time and energy showing up every week. I consider it almost an insult to have had to endure such humiliating and injustice. I have been demeaned before this council and all Lake County because it's on the internet and no one is saying why. This behavior seems to be harassing in nature. This is not acceptable and should not be imposed on anyone, especially longstanding, highly regarded citizen in this city. I am not done. And thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Rayan Edwards?
Good evening, council and community. This is what I talk about when I say a lack of understanding and a lack of education or why you guys should do better. We're telling us your responsibilities and your roles. See, when, when things like this happen, we have this lady, Pastor Richardson, coming up here every week. And ain't nobody just telling her, call me after the meeting. Or come meet with me after the meeting and let's have this conversation. We run from it when it's not going to go nowhere. And by not saying anything, you are setting a precedence in this community that this will keep happening. I want to talk about the senior building again. Another death. Another overdose. But I don't really want to beat this council up about it. I have to talk to you today, mayor, because that housing authority have a board. And I oftentimes ask my board, how many people actually on that board is qualified, experienced, have dealt with the entity that size? Because I'm not understanding what they're doing. I see an amazing director with no support. Tonight I asked aboard them about something that happened in that building and they say to me, I just felt that. And these are the people that my seniors are entrusted to make decisions or help make decisions for them. Two overdoses, hallway laid out, no compassion. And we ain't even talking about it. Two sophomore do- girls, how many of you aldermen know passed out in the school from using drugs in the bathroom? Tuesday. Is we're not talking. It's right in our faces. And we acting like we don't give a about. But y'all got good insurance. You have to show up twice a month. And you get a piece of check. And to some of y'all credit, some of y'all do do some work sometimes. But we need a little bit more than what y'all giving us. Because right now y'all are felonies. Our seniors are unprotected. Our kids are unprotected and I ain't blaming the police because they can only do so much. That's why I asked, where is the money? Because all this extra spending we doing, we can give some to them to get some more people out there to protect these people. They at least deserve that, y'all. At least that.
Mr. Edwards, can I just say one thing? First of all, we, we are, we have been diligently working on Kukula Towers.
Stop real quick. No, no, I have to say this respectfully.
Yeah, I got it.
Let's me and you talk.
I, I know, okay.
Don't respond to me here because I don't want to be treated any different from anybody else. Because when they come up here and they want somebody to respond to them, I want somebody to respond to them the same way y'all will respond to Ray Ray. If you can't do it for them, please.
I will give you a call with something.
Don't do it with me. Thank you.
I will set up a meeting with you.
Thank you.
Yep. More than happy to.
Charles, January Junior?
Well, that's a little blessing, follow Ray Ray. I only got a couple of things to say again, speaking of what he spoke about, I got four phone calls last week. All about Kukula Towers. I was told, I'm not, I have not privileged anything. I was told that person got thrown out for telling the truth. Like a, an informant. And was thrown out. Don't tell me about his rent wasn't paid, I want to hear that because it's winter time. And I know there's a state statute and I know we're home rule, but that's a public building. City council, you responsible for that building down there? Not their board, city council's responsible for that. I haven't heard one, I heard that our director is doing a great job and she got no help. That's not our fault. I'm being heard, I'm being told that the man got thrown out and our North Chicago police threw his stuff in the trash. North Chicago doesn't have the authority to take anybody's stuff out of their apartment. If you're going to get evicted, that's the Lake County sheriff. So let's make it clear, what's going on, city council? That doesn't make sense. We got an ex-chief, I ain't going to mention his name, his child was down there, lost his life. I heard about that. I didn't hear about that from none of the aldermen up here, I heard about that from the street. Alderman, what are we doing? We got some good chief and assistant chief of police. I'm hearing we got, we got police officers off the chain in North Chicago. I haven't, nothing concrete, but I've heard we got two that, one that's, that's gone and one that's back. That's terrible in our community. I'm also being told that we have, uh, our human resource director is the secretary to the police and fire board. That ain't supposed to happen. How does that happen, mayor? But again, just in twenty two twenty five, let's make it make sense. Thank you.
Tim Coleman?
First of all, I'd like to apologize for what happened last conference.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for what happened last council meeting. Got out while I was out there.
Glad you're okay.
All right. I don't want to say exactly what I want to say right now, but I wanted to just reassure you guys that been almost three decades down at the water plant. We're working mightily for the city and the citizen. That's all I want to say. We are. Regardless of, you know, the obstacles that's put before us, we doing our best down there. We going to work with Mr. Freeman here, make it the best we can. And my family wanted to say this, even though people that know me know I'm a stand-up person, I'm not trying to start no trouble or none of that stuff. The thing is, when it come to me, I'm trying to fight for the city. Some things you see, some things you just kind of scratch your head about, you know, you wonder, why is people saying stuff up here that you know is not making sense? But if you guys ever had a question, come talk to the employees down there. That's all we ask, you know? It's not just one side, come talk to the employees too. But we will work with whoever you have in place. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Barb A. Thomas.
Respectfully, Mayor Rockingham and to the city council, I stand before you to ask that, I live in 1500 block of Elizabeth, and I'm about three houses from the church of First Corinthian Missionary Baptist Church. Now, there are times that I walk down through the alley to the church and I notice that people who come to the church, they speed down that alley and I have to try to get over and step to the side, which I'm on the ground now. And I would like to know if it's possible that we could have some kind of speed bump or something to slow down this travel? It appears that they're doing at least 20 to 25 miles an hour going into the church and coming out of the church when the church leaves. So I'm just concerned about me walking through that alley. And we do have children that play out in that alley. So that is my concern, if you would consider to have speed bumps. And I thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carmisia Hawthorne.
Season's greetings, everybody. How is everybody? Good evening, Mayor Leon Rockingham and city council. Guys, I bring good news. It has been an awesome, awesome holiday season. Again, I am Commissioner Carmisia Hawthorne slash trustee Hawthorne as well. So I'm bringing light to Christmas and we got a couple of more events that's going to be going on. We have Christmas at the library will actually be taking place this Wednesday, December 18th. And there will be holiday stations, letters to Santa, and refreshments and much more. Please plan on attending this event. It's this Wednesday again from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, December 18th at the North Chicago Library. Onto the Falls Park. First off, I want to say, we actually had our equipment restored at Bolt Park last Saturday, so we are definitely happy about that. That was the conference for those of you that do not know, that was the equipment that was burnt down through arson and it finally has been replaced. So those children will definitely be happy this summer getting out there on that equipment. Next, we have also that's coming up, brunch with Santa. And that's actually going to be taking place December 21st as well as it will be a toy giveaway, guys. So please, make sure you bring those babies out there. Not only them, but you come on out and have brunch with Santa too. And last but not least, up for, because this is our last city council meeting, Falls Park Catholic Charity is actually hosting meals at Falls Park for the seniors. All seniors 60 and up are welcome. I got the flyers here. They will be providing a good meal, Swedish meatballs with gravy, rosemary potatoes. Oh my God, those potatoes are wonderful. Butter lima beans, peaches, graham crackers, Italian bread, milk and dessert. So seniors, those dates are January 7th and January 21st. We want you to call because we want to get you squared away. So that's all for me. Happy holidays, everybody, and let's enjoy ourselves the remainder of this meeting.
Thank you.
I brought flyers, so if you didn't hear because I talk a little fast, I brought flyers for those of you that would like a flyer, so they'll be at the back for you to pick them up. And I'll see you there at these events.
Thank you.
Elaine Collins.
Take your time.
Take your time.
No rush.
All right, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
All right. My name is Elaine Collins. Some of you are familiar with me, some of you aren't. And the ones that aren't, you will be soon. I live in Brookstone at Coles Park, so that tells you a whole lot right there. I'm here this evening just to give some information. Tomorrow, there will be a prayer meeting at my house. If you are interested, I live at 2645 Spruce Drive, like I said. At 5 o'clock, there will be a prayer meeting. You are welcome to come. You are welcome to enjoy and you are also welcome to get to know Missy because I'm on the mission. I'm on the mission. That is all I have to say. Everyone have a blessed evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is it. All right. Thank you very much, everyone. Moving on, regular agenda, seven dash one, consideration approval. Virginia Gibbs to the planning and zoning board replacing Hal Davis, three-year term until January of 2026.
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Evans.
I would like to approve of Virginia Gibbs to the planning zoning board replacing Hal Davis, three-year term until January 2026. Second.
Been moved by Alderman Evans, second by Alderman Allen, that seven dash one be passed as presented. Are there any questions, Alderman January?
Thank you, mayor. How was Ms. Gibbs recommended for this particular committee?
Actually, I think one of the aldermen brought her name into it, so.
Which?
Alderman.
Evans.
Evans?
Evans. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions? And she's in the audience tonight.
She's in the thirtieth row.
All right.
Very good. Any other questions? Hearing none? Roll call? Oh, she's got to, we'll wait for that.
She is right here.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Motion carried. Welcome to the, you know, to the planning and zoning board, Ms. Gibbs. I know you'll do a fine job. Thank you very much. All right.
Mayor, you said she's going to say anything because people want to see her.
Did you wish to say anything? I know that your resume or your, was in the packet, so yes. Go right ahead.
I just want to say thank you for voting for me and I believe that I will do a wonderful job for this city. Thank you.
I'm sure you will. Thank you very much. All right, seven dash two, city bills.
Matt Rockingham.
Alderman Allen.
Can I make a motion to pay the city bills for $1,678,924.73 when funds come available? Second.
Been moved by Alderman Allen, second by Alderman Evans, that the city bills be paid as presented. Are there any questions, Alderman January?
Yes, I actually have several questions. First one is on page five.
Thanks.
Under the Water Store Refuge Fund. Yes. The Illinois Architectural WTP Furnish and Install for $1,425. What is that for?
I would have, can I go get that? Because I'm not for sure right of hand. The description is cut off.
Okay. I'll come back to that in a second. Do we have my usual questions? Do we have the usual customary, do we have the appropriate amount in our accounts to cover this bill run? And when will the checks be cut and sent?
Okay, we do have sufficient funds in the account to cover the bill run. The checks will be cut tomorrow and sent out on Wednesday.
And then what do we have in our water fund as of end of Thursday?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
As of Thursday, the amount in the water fund was $5,162,696.21. And that's prior to the bill run and that's the liquid amount.
That's the liquid. Treasurer, what's our non-liquid?
The non-liquid is $1,411,307.24. And that's as of market close today.
Today. Okay, great. Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to come back to that line item on page five of the bill run.
I'm going to go run and just get the invoice really quick so that way.
No, that's okay. That's okay. I request that we remove this amount until this can be brought up in committee and discussed for that $1,425 for whatever that installation and furnishes.
Let's have Tawanda get that information first before we pull it from the.
If you.
Go ahead.
That's fine if they feel like they want to wait.
We could wait.
Sorry about that, Alderman. Okay, so it was the replacement of laminated glass that was in a metal frame at the water plant? Apparently something happened with some glass that broke and they replaced it for us.
Before you, is there anyone from the water plant, Bob, or Tommy, or Rob, can you get a little bit further clarification on that?
Illinois Architectural didn't mean anything, but Illinois Architectural Glass does. There's a window between the chlorine room and the pump room. That window was not put in there. We were getting a negative flow into the electronics room from the chlorine room and it was having an adverse effect on the electrical components. So we put the glass back in there. Don't know how it got broken or how long it's been gone. But in doing our latest rehab, we noticed the problem and we reinstalled the window. And this is the same company, the same sub that did the doors and windows in our latest upgrade.
And did that clear the problem?
I took care of the problem, correct. Thank you.
And then also, real quick while you're up here, what about the electrical repairs that was $4,826?
And those are just various electrical repairs that crop up, things that don't work, circuits that weren't working, things that needed to be restored just over the course of time, things deteriorate.
Can you give us examples, like exactly what electrical?
In the pumps themselves. And we had to also call the company and if you remember, we sent our raw water pumps out for, to get rebuilt. We had to bring the electrician in to uninstall those and disconnect the power and then reinstall it. It'll be coming back in to reconnect it, so that's in there as well.
Okay. Well, that's interesting because last council meeting, you told us our water plant is working sufficiently and that it's very effective. Doesn't sound like it to me with all of this repairs that are going on, which are necessary because it is getting older. So I have no problem with that, but I have a problem when we're told that things are running well down there and are doing good and they're not. I mean, we have pumps going out with repairs, we have, you know, all kinds of things going on. So it is not running efficiently right now. It will be once we get all these repairs. My last question for you, since you're up here, is has there been any installation of cameras? Or replacement of cameras done down there in that water plant?
Far as I know, there have been cameras reinstalled that were removed.
In which locations?
I believe, I'm not exactly sure where, didn't oversee that. That's being handled by the police department.
Okay, is that anywhere on this bill run about the replacement of the cameras?
Not underwater, not underwater or public works. Not something we're doing.
Okay. Okay, I would just, I want to, you know, make sure that we are very clear, and I can't speak for every alderman here, but I will speak for myself, that we are clear that we are to make sure we're not in violation of our union contract down there and that we are not putting cameras where they're not supposed to be. We need to make sure that everything is up and up down there.
Far as I know, there are no cameras that are in places that would be considered illegal.
Okay, thank you.
I will clarify that also.
Please.
That, no, I can vouch that there's no camera that are done or placed anywhere illegal.
Okay.
And there are, from my understanding, they're all back in place where they should be. Okay?
Is there any cameras in the office area?
They're all back where they should be at.
That's not an answer to my direct question.
Well, that's the answer I'm going to give you. So they're all back where they should be at.
Okay.
All right?
We know there's something up with that.
Any other questions on the bills? Hearing none? Roll call.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
I haven't had a chance to get the bill, so I'll have to say no. I've got to go through the bill to find to talk home for the record.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Motion carried. Miscellaneous business, anything under miscellaneous business?
Mayor Rockingham.
Alderman Evans.
First of all, we have to be clear on where some of the people that comes up and speak, it's not always the city's responsibility for different things. We have a housing board and that's for the housing in North Chicago for the Kukla Towers. It's not just for seniors. That board, that housing is for different people such as disabled and elderly and all. Also, for the library, they have a library board. For the Park District, there's a Park District Board. The school, there's a school. The school, there's a school board. See, everybody comes up here and they assume that the city knows for each one of these boards. No, the city does not know. But what we need to do is direct these people to the right board, so they can go to the right proper people and get the right information that they need. Because we, we can't give them the information that they want, if they want something from the school board. They were talking about what the kids at the uh, library and things like that. Let's let the people know where they need to go prior to them leaving off here. Because they do come up here and assume that it's all the um, city and it's not. And if people look at the um, cars that they receive in the mail with the taxes, they will see how much taxes being paid. Not only from the city, but who you paying your taxes to? You paying taxes to the school board, you paying taxes to the library, you paying to the different entities. And it's a lot of tax money that's going out to these people. Now, I'm just gonna say this. At the same time, I'm gonna talk, I'm gonna talk to someone on this, on this board here. And I'm gonna make a request that I would like to be given to me. And I want the whole board to know if they want, if they want a copy of it, that's fine. I'm gonna ask the clerk for a request for the people's attendance that's here. I want the last year of these people's attendance that's been here and been leaving early and not stand for our city council meetings and things. I need that to be out there because it's wrong to mislead people, to make them think you've been in this city council and you haven't. Now, I've told this audience and many more people before, I said, things gonna start changing during these months between now and April. People gonna sit here and pretend they've been at a council meeting all day, which they should be. But for the last three years or so, they have not been in attendance. So therefore, we always have to go back to talk about something that we've already discussed at that committee. We shouldn't be going backwards, we should be moving forward. And before I go, I just wanna congratulate two people that did a great job. Because I had a Christmas party over the, over the uh, weekend and it was great. And that's Miss Donna Kalanowski, she's always involved in our city. She's been involved in coming to these council meetings honestly for many, many years. And she's one of the people, you hear people talk about street signs, she was, she was one of that getting a street sign. We don't wanna, we're not gonna put it up now because we got people here discussing street signs as if we, we haven't done the right thing before. See, we, we, we know what we've done up here. We got, we have answered the question to people regarding the street sign. Now, if they wanna come up here for their three minutes and continue to talk about it, that's fine. But they got the answer, they just want different change. But I'm gonna ask one person to come up here because I wanna congratulate him on what he's done in this community. And that's Dante Brooks. Dante, come on up here. Come on up here Dante. I got something to tell you, I got, we just got something to tell you. Come here, don't be bashful. Come right up to that podium, come right up to that podium.
Uh-uh, uh-uh.
Now Dante Brooks, he's from here, he's from North Chicago. He teaches, he worked, matter of fact, he worked here in North Chicago. Great person. This person has been very helpful in the community. That is somebody you should know.
Point of order.
No, 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 no.
Someone you should know.
A point of order.
No.
No, this is Dante Brooks. Dante Brooks has helped.
I appeal the chair. Can I get a second?
Dante Brooks has helped. Have not been recognized.
And he has.
I feel the chair not recognizing me as a councilman.
What is the problem?
Can I get a second?
What is the problem? Okay.
There's Robert rules and orders at this, can I get a second? Can I get a roll call? Can I get a roll call? That's a, that's a point of order and that's a. No, I appealed the chair.
You know what?
I, I said.
Thank you Dante.
Thank you, Dante.
Thank you, don't, come on Alderman.
Dante.
Alderman, come on, let's not act like we don't know what this is, stop it.
Thank you for going to.
That was disrespectful, very disrespectful.
Alderman, you, you have not been recognized and I ask that you please finish, let Alderman Evans finish his comment.
Well, thank you, I just wanted to introduce him. He's someone you should know, he's someone that helps out in the community. I don't know what that was about, but it's okay. Because see, I told you guys, it's okay. We got four more months, thank you.
Alderman Allen.
I just want uh, let the citizens know today that our water plant is running a hundred percent, hundred and twenty percent great. You know why I can tell you that? I'll give you an example. We got a Abbey, a Fortune five hundred company, we got an Abbott Laboratory ION forty-five that use that water to make they pill that we take every day. So don't ever question the city, how good is our water? We have great water. So let the citizens know, when you hear this here, I'm tired of hearing about is the water good, is something wrong with the water? We have great water, we got great workers down there. So if, if these, if that water wasn't any good, you think them five, forty-five hundred company would be taking that water and making medicine with it? So I'm tired of hearing this here, I'm tired of it. Let's focus on being some positive thing in our city. When you go to Walmart or everywhere you buy your water, do you test them, hey, how good is this water? You don't know nothing about it, you can check on the city website any day, how good our water is. So let's stop that. Number two question is, we came to city council, they, people start by wanting a grocery store in the city of North Chicago. Alderman Evans and I sit there and talk with them guys, we bought a grocery store into our city. We put three hundred thousand dollars up for that, trying to satisfy our citizens in North Chicago. Let's keep it real here today, are we trying to do some things after, yes, we did. We voted on that to get that to come in our city, but nobody supported it. Nobody supported, the man told the.
It was spoiled.
Okay.
I got this.
Okay.
Hey, 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 hey. Hey, oh, hey.
If, if you keep on the mind.
If you continue on, we'll, we'll have you removed.
Removed. I'm telling you, but I didn't say nothing about that, let me talk. So I went out to Walmart and seen spoiled food out there, did I go over there and tell them about it and put it on, on, on the walkie? No, I didn't. We should be talking about some positive thing in our city here. We got J and J talks about right now, people ain't not supporting them as much as they should be, they just came in our community. If we, people might, we got too many dollar store, that cutting down on your taxes in your community, if people have you paying. So I'm, I'm saying, I'm just speaking for me, so if you have a problem with Alderman, you come to Bob Allen. I live at twenty-nine, twenty-nine Argon Drive, start by any time, we can talk about it. But I'm tired, this company every day, we talking about negative stuff in the city of North Chicago. Let's talk about some positive things that we got in cities in North Chicago. We got a Starbucks, we got these J and J, we got the Dollar Tree, we got other business company in our community. We getting up here, uh, the veterans project coming in, trying to help the veterans and stuff, what are you talking about? That's work together fixing roads around our city. I did, my phone number is eight four seven four seven three two one nine five one four five, call me, we'll talk about it, thank you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Anyone else?
The chairman.
Alderman Coleman.
I wanna get the record straight, um, first of all, who is the parliamentarian of this uh, proceeding?
I chair this.
Parliamentarian. Oh, the attorney.
Mayor's the chair.
Hey, but uh. That's a yes and no question, sir, are you the parliamentarian? And if we're having a council meeting and I'm sitting here, we need to know if you're the parliamentarian. So we can follow Robert rules and order like the state statute of Illinois requires us to. Are you the parliamentarian?
The mayor's the chair of the meeting.
I didn't ask you who the mayor was.
He answered.
I asked you, are you the parliamentarian of the meeting?
Move on Alderman Coleman, what is your question?
My question is, do we have a parliamentarian at this point? Because I have a parliament question that I need to address to the parliamentarian. So what I wanna know is, the mayor is the attorney, the parliamentarian of the.
Move on, he answered your question.
There's a reason why, he doesn't wanna answer that question.
Okay, but I, I will tell you this, until you're recognized at anything from the chair, your point of orders will not be taken unless you are recognized through me as the chair of this meeting.
Now, if we had a parliamentarian here, he would be incorrect on those Robert rules of order. And that's why if the attorney was the parliamentarian, I could let you know that he's incorrect. That's why he's saying.
But at this time, I'm not chair of this meeting.
Now, at no time can you not recognize an Alderman under Robert rules of order. And any parliamentarian in the state of Illinois will tell you, you cannot ignore a council member. So when I put a point of order in, you have to rule on that point of order and I have the right to appeal the chair. And the parliamentarian will tell you that I have that right, sitting here, as elected by the people in the second ward.
Okay, anyone else?
So.
Any.
What, what, that, no, no, we, we just had this conversation.
Your convert, we move on.
No.
Anyone else?
Yes, yes. I wasn't done, that was my first one, I have another uh, order of business on the agenda. Um. I would like to motion a legislative action to remove the cameras at the water plant above the desk of the operator's office at the next council meeting, which would be. Would you like to verify the date? The next council meeting? On January the second. For Tuesday. January the sixth.
That is not a, a proper, that's not properly done and I'm not gonna move on it.
That's right, say that again?
If you did not properly, that is not a proper motion and not gonna be uh, moved forward.
That's not proper about the motion.
You, it, it was not properly brought to, to council.
Okay, well, I would like to make a motion to amend.
This is, this is miscellaneous business.
No, this is miscellaneous business.
Council or any.
Order, I can introduce new business, select business and a parliamentarian will tell you that.
Alderman.
Mister attorney, would you like to?
We're not gonna be voting on any of these issues that you're bringing up.
No, we are going to be voting and your job as a chairman, right? Is to not say what we can and what we can't do as a council.
Is there anything else?
That is not your job, yes.
Entertain a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved Alderman Allen, second Alderman Evans.
Someone, either order, point of order, point of order. Now you have to recognize the point of order. Question of privilege, question of privilege, I have a question of privilege. I have a question of privilege. I have a valid question of privilege.
Screaming point of order without explaining.
No, I have, um, are you the parliamentarian? Because if you're not the parliamentarian, you can't speak now, can you? You can only speak to the, you can only speak to the chairman. No, the parliamentarian is the only, under Robert rules of order, the parliamentarian is the only one that can address the council. Now, if you're the parliamentarian, under Robert rules of order, you can address the council. If not, you have to address the chair and the chair has to address the council. You don't, you're a member at this point, are you the parliamentarian to address the chair? A Robert.
Our city attorney has the floor.
And it's Alderman.
Chair of the meeting.
Thank you, that's all I ask.
Mayor, screaming point of order without explaining what rules being violated is not a proper point of order. And, and he has not moved on any of that.
That wasn't mine, that was, that was Kathy's point of order, I mean Alderman January's point of order.
I, I didn't hear any reason.
My point of order is because I wanted to speak.
That's not it.
He had the floor, she was not recognized.
Yeah, as chair.
The chair did not reckon the chairman and that, that's a point of order. You can't not recognize a council member. No, that's not okay, you cannot, no, we can recess the meeting if we're not gonna follow Robert rules of order by state statute. We all took an oath up here. Uh, there's no pop, there's no politics.
And arguing with the mayor about this?
No, no, I'm not arguing, I'm arguing about.
You wanna sit up here and cause a disturbance about a point of order? He done told you what the thing was, he done explained it to you, what else did the man gotta do? They done explained it to y'all, y'all still acting foolish.
Under.
What's wrong with y'all?
On the, on the, on the order, under Robert rules of order, Carl can only speak to the chair.
Talking to both of y'all.
And cannot speak to me, so address that to the chairman.
Chair, I can cut all of you off.
Thank you.
At, as chairman, and that's what I'm doing.
No, no, you cannot, you cannot acknowledge a council member. Under, no, we have the right, question of privilege, we have the right as council members to speak, period. You can't not acknowledge a council member. We are elected.
The chair has control over the course of the meeting.
But he does not have the right to not acknowledge the council, that's all I'm saying.
He did acknowledge you, he gave you the floor and he is now saying your time, but the floor is up.
No, he did not acknowledge Kathy when uh, Alderman January was trying to speak. There's a point of order that's on the floor that Alderman January put in.
Yeah.
And then I have a question of privilege because under miscellaneous, I wanted to, under miscellaneous, I wanted to introduce new business. Since we don't have new business on the agenda. I do apologize for the people that don't follow this conversation, this conversation is between me and the attorney and the mayor. Because there's some Robert rules of order and some, some laws that have been violated that I think that we need to address.
Between yourself, because myself is out of it and.
Well, recess the meeting, that, that precedes it.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn the meeting.
And I've called twice to have a roll call, roll call on the, on it.
But they'll.
Alderman Allen.
Hi.
Alderman Smith. Alderman Murphy.
Yes.
Alderman January.
No.
Alderman Jackson.
No.
Alderman Coleman.
No.
Alderman Evans.
Hi.
Okay, continue on.
Alderman January has the floor with the point of order.
Until I recognize her.
Mister, Mister Mayor.
I recognize, as chair, that is my, that's my right.
Almost embarrassed.
That is my right to, to, to recognize whoever is as a chair.
As the chair to be neutral, you're supposed to be neutral.
I, I am neutral.
No.
And, and I have the right to recognize whoever is, is.
That's not neutral, that's not neutral. It's not neutral, sir. So all I'm asking you to do is follow Robert rules of order, which we all took an oath to follow the Illinois state statute. I'm, I'm asking you to follow the law, that's all.
She says she's gonna go to the state's attorney, let her go to the state's attorney.
She's, but she's still, you still have to dispose of her point of order that's on the floor.
She, she has not been recognized.
But you sti- well, there's a point of order that's on. I would like to vote to appeal the chair and recognize Alderman January, all in favor.
Actually.
All in favor.
I, I can make a all.
Yes, I can, point well, point well received.
You cannot.
On the floor, I can, the, the parliamentarian tell her, I can, if there's a point of order on the floor, correct? I can say well received, second, all in favor.
There is not a proper point of order on the floor, there is not, I have, there is not a point of order where the, the rule that was violated was described.
Okay.
You just didn't hear it because of everything else and the mayor's speaking. That's okay, I'll take it, I, it's by hand.
No, 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 we're just following the rules, that's all. That's all, we're just following the rules, there's a point of order. Well, I have a question, I have a.
Doesn't know parliamentary rules, obviously.
I have a question of privilege at this point. I have a question of privilege. You can't ignore my question of privilege, that's a ranking. You can't ignore question of privilege. That's a ranking number four under Robert rules of order. That's the highest thing that I have. And that's when I feel that I'm being misused and not recognized and being mistreated by the chair. I have what's called uh.
Just because you're talking over everybody doesn't mean you, you're actually doing the proper procedures.
Uh, parliamentarian, can you tell him I have a question of privilege? Hold on wait, wait, hold on, let me get my, hold on wait, let me get it out.
Paying for an attorney to be here who's supposed to know the Robert rules of order. I'm asking if you to say what's supposed to be done according to the Robert rules of order.
But he's being talked over by one of their councilmen.
We're quiet right now, I wanna know, but that's what we paying you for. I wanna know what is supposed to be done or not done.
Where's the noise coming from? Can you turn it off, please?
Uh, city attorney, you can address Alderman Smith.
A point of order. Without citation to the rule of procedure that's being violated is not a proper point of order. And simply announcing point of order over and over again doesn't make it any more proper. You have to cite the rule of procedure being violated when you're asking for a point of order. Point of order is not a means to simply interrupt someone. It is a means to highlight a rule of procedure that's being violated. So simply saying it is not by itself enough.
So, so.
No, he has the floor.
She was trying to, my understanding, she was trying to explain that, but it was too much going on. So I feel that she still should be allowed to say her point of order.
That's not up to me.
Well, you were saying that she wasn't, or it wasn't said.
No, he was saying Alderman Coleman wasn't. That's what, that, if I, if I.
That was the example I was referring to.
All right.
So, so every time Alderman Coleman states point of order. It's, it, and and moves on to to do a uh motion, that's not a proper point of order.
Okay, so then let's say this. You've heard everything that has just taken place according to the Robert rules of order.
I I did not hear anything besides point of order. I did not hear any citation to the rules of procedure being violated. So I until, I still have not heard anyone cite to a rule of procedure being violated when they said point of order. So if you said it and I didn't hear it, that's my honest answer, because there's a lot of people talking over everyone else.
You're right.
Okay.
So now we have everything, mayor, we have everything on record then, right? We taped it and we have a clerk, so I feel that we should still, because if it's not done decently and ordered, then why are we up here? I mean.
And 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 Alderman, I agree with you. When it's done decent and order, people will get the respect. But when it's talked over, they don't not, they do, they do not deserve respect. Now, even when I recognized Alderman Coleman, he went into, well, we.
It's all on record, so we all, just you said.
Well, I mean, you know, it it wa- it was not done properly. I mean, just because he caused point of order and brings a motion out, that's not the proper procedure. I mean, you just heard it from our city attorney who you just said should know Robert rules of order. So he should have came back with whatever procedure was done, he should be able to quote it in as as far as what procedure and why that procedure wasn't done properly. Just because to say point of order is not a proper way to get, get your point or try to do a motion uh to city council.
Now, just out of respect to you, I think he was trying to ask you to allow him to speak and you.
I I gave him the floor. Did he not have a floor? He did have a floor, and and at that point, he needs to tell us what procedure that we did that was out of order. Did he, did he state any procedure that was out of order? Or did he make, try to make a motion?
Point of information.
So, I'm, 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 I'm addressing Alderman Smith, and then I will address Alderman January. It, uh, have your uh questions been answered?
Yes.
Alderman January, what is your point of order?
My point of order is that you violated my ability to speak as an elected official.
Thank you very much. Do you wish to make any comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mister mayor, I'm really disappointed. I've been sitting up here for three full terms. And this is the most chaotic I have ever heard this council. And, well, no, this, uh, you're wrong, I I'm wrong. Uh, it was chaotic way before me. But second of all, when you shut down any of these aldermen, I don't care who it is. I don't care what your reason is behind it. Whether you like them, dislike them, they're running against you politically, whatever. Or they have stuff to say that's true that you feel is not. We all have differences up here, okay? And we know that. Our citizens know that we have differences. In opinions, and those should not come into play when an alderman needs or wants to speak. As far as you know, the moment you shut down an alderman from speaking. You are shutting down the voices of your constituents from that ward. And that's improper. My si- my constituents in my ward do not like to hear this. Okay? They are wanting to have their voices said through their alderman. And by hearing it through the alderman, and when you shut that alderman down, you just shut down part of your, your city. From be speaking. My next thing is that I wanted to discuss is I need to know and understand more about Kukla Towers. I am disgusted of us receiving, my husband and I are both receiving calls from Kukla Towers. And constituents around there. A gentleman was thrown out of Kukla Towers a week ago. Week and a half ago, when it was the coldest out here temperature wise. And there are laws that are set up under housing. That state during the months of October to, I believe it's March or April. You cannot evict anyone for any reason from their residence during those months. So that has been violated by that director there at that facility. Therefore, because she's also come up here and lied in front of this council city. Hold on, yeah, I have the floor, I have.
Don't start putting things that.
Hold on.
We're not sure about. Just, when you start saying lying. I would suggest not stating that way, maybe might.
You know what?
Okay, all right.
You gave me the floor.
I, I'm just.
Allow me to speak.
Go right ahead.
And then you can speak your, your, your opinion after. Like you always do anyway.
I will.
We are not a housing authority. This facility is owned privately now. And has been for several years. So the only truth that's come out of there is that this is not a senior building. This is a building that is for anyone, basically, that's disa- disabled or um is like, I think fifty or up, are able to stay in this residence. But to throw somebody out, to have the number of deaths from overdose in that facility. Is outrageous. I am calling, this alderman is calling for the resignation or firing of that director over that housing in Kukla.
Ain't nobody gonna fire her. What's wrong with you? How dare you say something like that?
I can say this because I know my rights.
All right, all right, all right, all right. Audience, audience, Alderman.
I am not lying. More than you know, Ray Ray, more than you know. I'm done, mayor.
This is chairman.
This is ridiculous. It is disgusting.
I have a question, uh, I have a question.
The number of loss of family.
Okay.
Members in that facility.
Thank you.
You don't know.
Mayor.
Oh my god.
I, all I can do is say.
That's very disrespectful.
Part of the job.
Mister mayor.
Yeah, you need to.
Mister mayor.
Alderman Coleman.
What I mean is, I mean, I mean business, uh. And for the people out here, I'm not screaming and hollering. The way Robert rules of order goes is one thing stacks upon another thing like Legos, and they stack on top of each other, right? And the ruling on the floor, right, was with uh January's point of order. And she does not have to state the rules. Point of order means enforce the rules, which was not to be recognized. At that point, I had a question of privilege, right? Which was not acknowledged by the mayor. And when the mayor didn't acknowledge my question of privilege, right, I called a point of order. At that point, which none of these things were ruled upon, correct? So we're still back on the floor. The motion doesn't move, it doesn't disappear. I have a question of privilege, and it doesn't just disappear. You have to dispose of the motion, correct?
You gonna have a right to place a motion, Alderman.
This is my question. I have a right to question a privilege. Now, now, you, you, you know how you let the attorney talk to Kathy? Let the attorney talk to me. Um, sir, I have a question of privilege. What does that mean? Can you explain to the council what question of privilege means?
You're asking whether you have the privilege to address the council.
Correct. And how high does that rank on Robert rules of order? Does that require a second, or is that something that I can interrupt with a question of privilege?
It's not debatable.
It's not debatable, so I can interrupt, correct?
The person who has the floor has the right to finish. So only one person can speak at a time. So you can make your question of privilege. But the person who has the floor has the right to finish. And after that, you can address your question of privilege.
And was my question of priv- was my question of privilege handled properly by the chair?
I don't think you ever expressed what privilege you were questioning.
Because, hold on, the, the point.
Like the point of order, you have to explain what privilege you are saying was violated.
And I was beginning to explain that, and the mayor stood here and said, I don't have the floor, he's not going to acknowledge me. And that is the question of privilege is, he's not acknowledging me to say it. So how can I appeal the chair if he's not acknowledging me? Is that proper, Robert rules of order?
I believe someone else had the floor at the time you intervened.
No, I clearly had the floor. I was referring back to January with the point of order. Okay, so do I have, do I have a question? Uh, do I have a question of privilege that's on the floor that the mayor needs to dispose of?
Absolutely. Say more complete, you can't just yell out rules. You have to say what rules are being violated.
Uh, no, I didn't call a point of order. What I'm saying is I have the floor, correct? I'm calling a motion, he's not acknowledging me. He's saying, I, you can't talk at all. And I have a question of privilege.
The rules of the council.
Is that a motion on the floor? He's saying it's not. I'm saying it is. Is it no, I don't have the floor to put it, a motion? Or do I have the floor? That's what I'm asking.
I, I, I think you're merging two questions. So the question is whether you have the right to address the council. And the mayor recognized you and let you, let you speak. Separately is whether or not you have the right to make a motion to put something directly on the council. And under the council's rules, things come through committee first, and then they go on the council.
On the information, that's, we, 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 we talking about a motion. You talking about the, the original motion. I'm talking about the question of privilege. He's not acknowledging it, right? And I'm saying as an alderman, you have to acknowledge me, right? Now, can we as aldermen vote? Because see, this is what we have here. We have enough aldermen that are gonna stick together, and we're all gonna respect each other. I don't care if it's something that he says that I don't like, we're all gonna respect each other. And we all think that we all have an opportunity and we all have a voice. And we've done asked this mayor numerous of times to include us in on the decision-making process, right? And we have enough right now votes, right, to overrule this mayor right now. And to allow everybody an opportunity to talk because that's fair. And Bobby, fair is fair. Everybody and every council member has the right to talk. And the mayor should not be ignoring a council member, period. Now, we have enough votes. So I'm gonna put it on the floor. But I have to put it on the floor through a question of privilege, correct?
What are you putting on the floor? I don't think you're, what are you putting on the floor with the question of privilege?
Can I get a question of privilege? Is that on the floor?
What is the privilege or question?
The mayor would have to acknowledge me, right? Under Robert rules of order, wouldn't the mayor have to acknowledge me?
You have to say a complete question. What privilege are you questioning?
That the mayor does not have the right to ignore me. And I appeal the chair in making that decision. He does not have the right to ignore any council member. Okay, back to the original, I would like to put a motion on the floor legislative action to remove the camera at the operators uh at the water plant. That is the motion.
Mayor, you can't do that. You know you can't do that. That gotta go through the committee first. How you just gonna come up with a miscellaneous business? Talk about what you wanna remove from the, uh, water plant. You cannot do that. That's not gonna be done. We not gonna do nothing like that. That is totally incorrect. You know that's incorrect, so just to jump up here and say, oh, I got four votes, so we gonna remove the cameras. No.
And.
Those cameras are down there for safety.
And you are.
Could get sick and everything else. And it's a big deal, all of a sudden, it's such a big deal. We don't want cameras down at the water plant. Them cameras gonna stay out there. I got the support of everybody, it's gonna stay out there. We can't help it, 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 it's a crime scene right now.
Mister chairman.
Crime scene, so leave it alone.
Mister chairman, that's. Alderman January.
We was sitting here for about forty-five minutes, cause you hollering about some cameras.
Alderman January. Alderman January. No, we're not.
Jesus.
Yeah, I will, um.
Didn't want Dante to talk, but them two wanna run some. Unbelievable.
Now, um, I don't, this, this uh is not going to deter me from what I have to say in the motion that I'm putting on the floor. Now, because the alderman is, he is correct, right? I can't, I can't just put a motion on the floor. He's correct. Just give me an opportunity to say you're correct. But I can put a motion on the floor to waive the first reading. And that was where we were at before everything got confused. So I'm putting a motion like they do all the time to waive the committee, right? And put it on the council floor. We've seen it done numerous of times. So that's what I would like to motion is a waiver of the notice.
We don't have a resolution to waive the notice on yet.
It's a legislative action.
The ru- the ru- rules of order of the city say that resolutions submitted to the council shall be reduced in writing.
This isn't a resolution. This is a legislative action. This is a legislative action. What we're doing is we're requesting for the Public Works Department and the council.
Did you talk to the public?
They are, first of all, we are the city and we are the council, right? We'll have an opportunity to debate this. We don't have to debate it tonight.
Public Works Chairman saying no.
We don't have to debate it tonight. We've got two weeks.
Well, do it.
We're putting it on the agenda for two weeks.
You wasting everybody's time. You standing talking about some for the last forty minutes. Come on, man. We got people that's here. That's ridiculous.
That's what I'm asking.
But they wanted to hear it, so now they heard it. Wasn't it?
I guess we never gonna rule Carl out of order. I mean, Alderman, uh, January, uh. Alderman Evans out of order, huh?
Thank you. Thank you, Piki. Thank you.
What are we gonna do with the motion?
Alderman Evans pointed out that you can't do it. And you said it. He was correct.
So we have to, hold on, you can laugh where you want. Um, you, you, you know what's funny and what is not funny is I'm dealing with this. This is what I'm dealing with every day for the last two years. Okay, I'm sorry. That some of you guys are ready to go home. It's been a few times I've been ready to go home. But today, we gonna get down to this, cause this is affecting my life. It's affecting my livelihood. It's affecting employees as well. Okay, so what? I'm asking to waive the, the committee.
Through the committee.
So are we gonna vote to put it on the committee? Can we motion a vote to put it on the committee?
Yes.
You're not running the meeting, the chairman. You, you just, you gave yourself away. Uh, Mr. Mayor? Can we put it on the committee?
No, it's not going.
See, there we go. With a motion and a second and four votes, we can put it on the committee.
Come to the chair, right? The chairman that runs the, the meeting?
That's it.
But see, this is what we have now. We have a chairman that is not running the meeting. He's just sitting there. He's not having any action. And that's all you're doing. You're just sitting there. I want a motion.
I'm not gonna make that. I'm not gonna move as a chair. I have that right. Now what are you gonna do?
Are you the parliamentarian? Does he not have to move? And can I appeal the chair? I don't mind motion in recess, but we're gonna dispose of these motions on the floor. I'm sorry. It's been two years, people.
We are not a jury. We is not here to do no jury duty.
The chair of the committee that you wanted beyond and get it to be put on the committee agenda.
If he wishes to do it.
Uh, we know the way that works. I want to vote to put it on the committee with a motion and a second like we did at the last council meeting. And I'm asking the mayor to make the motion.
You're asking the mayor to make the motion?
Well, I'm gonna make the motion. I make the motion to put this on the committee so we can push this to committee at the next committee meeting to remove the camera at the water department. And we'll put it on the committee. Now we got a second. Now we need the mayor at this point to call the roll call, correct? We'll put it under, um.
Police and fire.
You can't move that from Public Works.
Yes, we can. Cause it was, I was just told that it was the police that put the cameras up.
Where is that? In Public Works, right?
Uh, no, under.
What you still doing here? Don't you be gone by now?
Under police and fire. That is correct. Under police and fire, January, the that's January when? Clerk was at the six. January the sixth. Police and fire. And we have a second.
You got your second, right?
Yeah, we got it.
So there needs to be roll call.
I'm not calling the roll.
That's Robert rules of order, sir.
You can go to the next item.
Now, you can motion to adjourn, but that's Robert rules of order. We got a second.
Yeah, put something where you want to put it at.
No, 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 no. Let the, let the, let the two people talk, Mr. Evans, please. Let him talk. Let, let him get it together. Let him get it together. I have a motion and a second.
He didn't know.
Now, my Alderman friends have never not listened to me. If I had something to say, same way I would listen to them if they had something to say. Nah, we all, we all, Alderman friends up here.
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, there's nothing that can be talked about. Actually, that, you can't even acknowledge the Alderman. He's gotta make, he's gotta got a motion and a second. He's gotta stop being so stubborn. He's gotta follow Robert rules of order. He gotta follow the law. Or he's gotta adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Mayor. Since we seem to be at a stalemate, I wish to table this motion until the next meeting where everything could be put in proper order, whatever documentation needs to be done, and to go to a proper committee.
A second.
Got two.
Jackson, second by Alderman. Murphy, the table. Question on roll call.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor. I move for adjournment of the city council meeting at this time.
Second.
We move Alderman Jackson, second by Alderman Coleman. The city council stand adjourned. Are there any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Motion carried.
That's attorney drinking.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
We got committees.
Yeah.
We got committees. We got committees yet. All right, uh, committee as a whole. Anybody has any, uh, out of the, out of the, uh, department heads? Do we wanna open it?
Uh, yeah, I got a question.
Okay, which one? Uh, just to let you know, the, uh, number two. Entertainer motion to open, uh, committee of the whole.
So moved.
It moved by Alderman Jackson, second, second by Alderman, uh, January. Paul, Paul the role?
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Okay, uh, the reason I didn't open, I wasn't sure if anybody wanted to open it, but Alderman, uh, Jackson, yeah, right. Ju- just to let you know that, uh, number two has been removed for, for right now.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. That's what was what I was gonna ask.
Okay.
Cause I had a question about it.
Okay, uh. Any other department heads that you wish to?
No.
Not for me, no.
Okay. Anybody else with any other department heads? Hearing done, entertain a motion to adjourn. We move by.
Allen, January.
Yes. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Motion carried.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the Judiciary Committee meeting. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
At this time, we have two items. Uh, the first item is the discussion and review of Brookstone at Coles Park. And the second item is discussion and review of ordinance amendment section ten dash five dash eleven, no overnight parking. Um, I believe, uh, Greg, are you going to, the Chief of Staff, you gonna cover Brookstone?
Both the mayor and I.
Okay, all right. At this time, I'll turn it over to Chief of Staff.
We had, uh, since the council last met, we had two significant actions as it relates to Brookstone. Uh, the first one was the adjudication hearing where the, uh, hearing officer, uh, required the city to develop a safety plan to be executed by Brookstone and get Brookstone's commitment on it. That happened a week ago Thursday on the twelfth, I believe. Uh, Brookstone acquiesced to everything, including putting, um, security personnel on the ground. Cameras, staffing, so it was a positive step. We've set up milestones to determine if they meet the objectives. And if they don't meet those milestones, there's consequences of five hundred dollars a day fine, which is being currently held in advance. So we're hopeful that we'll see some positive activity for residents. Uh, one of the residents, Ms. Collins, is here. She's been a value, val- invaluable to that community in bringing forward her concerns and, uh, sharing information with us that will help us, uh, curtail the activity in that community, in, in that part of the community. Uh, so we're appreciative of all those residents who are actively engaged in, uh, in, in, uh, the security and safety of Brookstone. The second thing, and the mayor can speak more directly to it, is the, and I was, I was out last week, um, the mayor and Chief Perez attended a meeting with the housing authority, the state housing authority regarding the activity with Brookstone. I can tell you that what was reported back to me from the police chief was the, uh, was the fact that uh, the attorney from IDA as well as the, uh, senior staff from IDA that walked the property as well as became aware of the concerns voiced by the mayor and the police chief, uh, were not happy. They were not happy with, uh, Brookstone and Brookstone's management of that property. And, uh, Mayor?
Yes, uh, I, uh, correct. We, uh, met with IDA, Lake County Housing Authority, uh, the Benoit Group. Uh, we had an opportunity to walk the, the, uh, throughout the property and, uh, I expressed, once we got back, we didn't stay, we weren't. They, they had other issues, but we did, had an opportunity to, 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 uh, address the issues that the city of North Chi- North Chicago had, which is regarding the, uh, punch list that needs to be corrected from, uh, the Benoit Group, uh, regarding the surety bond for seven million dollars that we have. And then also the safety concerns that the city of North Chicago has. And we did address those to, uh, uh, IDA. We addressed it to the Benoit Group. Uh, there was the, uh, person there with regarding the surety bonds that was, uh, also there. Uh, as I told them, from the city of North Chicago standpoint, we are not going to decrease that, that bond. Uh, I know that the Benoit Group wants us to, to decrease, decrease it by four million dollars so they can get additional credits. Uh, I explained to them that until all the punch list is corrected, I am not going to, uh, authorize that to be done. Uh, they need to step up. They've had an opportunity to, uh, they, they've asked us to give them a list of priority of where, you know, what needs to be done and, and what directive. But that was almost two months ago and they could have started doing some of the punch lists, even the low hanging fruit. And they have done nothing. So I explained to them that, you know, uh, that bond will stay at what it is until things are corrected. Uh, then I also addressed the safety issues that are going on at, at Brookstone regarding shootings. Uh, the lights that are been, you know, out that they did not address to try to get them corrected. The fact that, uh, residents sometimes had no opportunity to get management regarding issues that are going on in their, uh, facility that, uh, you know, it was funny that, uh, we went through and all of a sudden, uh, the clubhouse had someone in there actually maintaining it. Uh, and they, you know, they, uh, Benoit wanted to say that that's been there for, you know, several months. And I, you know, just went up to the young lady that was in there. I says, well, how long have you been here? She said for the last maybe week. And, uh, so, uh, I knew that wasn't quite, you know, proper. So, uh, we, we addressed our concerns. I think IDA is, is listening to us. Uh, I think as, as long as we continue to hold, you know, our, their feet to the fire that, you know, some of these issues are gonna get corrected. Uh, I, I, again, one of the biggest things I expressed to them was the fact that we've got residents there that needs to feel safe in that facility. You know, we, we gave them an opportunity for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do, you know, uh, security. They backed off of it. So I mean, if, if, it's gotta be put back on the Benoit Group. Uh, and, uh, as far as IDA, I said if they can't handle it, then they need to get another management company in there that can. So uh, again, I know that we left so that IDA could address a, I guess, financials that were going on with the Benoit Group. So, uh, we did not have an opportunity to sit in on that, but, uh, from a city standpoint, uh, we did express, you know, we want to make sure that all that is, needs to be taken care of there needs to get resolved. So we, we will see, uh, at the next hearing, see how much they will actually, uh, comply with, uh, our concern. So, uh, again, they did say, I think they wanted to bring safe, some type of security in there. Uh, and our next count, uh, court date is in January, February? February. So we'll see, you know, what they comply with at that point. Mayor. Alderman Smith.
Consequences. We've been going back and forth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that's right.
Okay, know your place. Okay.
Boy, Alderman Jackson.
Well, we just had that conversation.
I made a mistake. I just, the mayor was talking. I was just.
Well, be, be, be.
Alderman Jackson.
Alderman Smith.
Thank you. Mayor, what are the consequences of, cause we keep going on and on and on, giving them extensions, extensions. What consequences are we gonna put in place if they don't comply?
At the last hearing where the, um, administrative hearing officer uh, said to, uh, gave direction for a safety plan to be crafted, she began a five hundred dollar per day fine going back, that was a month ago. Going, and it builds, it doesn't go away. Uh, in abeyance, which means it'll stay there until what's supposed to be achieved is achieved. Or if it's not, the city gets the fine money and then we take our next action, which would probably be through courts, court action, I guess. I, I would defer.
How is that money collected?
Well, it's the court orders it. They have to pay. I mean, just like any other court order where you'd have to pay the fine.
And then when that, the one is collected, let's say we get several thousand dollars, then where does that money go then?
General fund. It goes in the revenues.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, you done? Okay, are you on the questions from any other Alderman? Okay, if not, let's go on to item number two. The discussion and review of ordinance amending, uh, section ten dash five dash eleven overnight parking, uh, presentation will be done by Chief Perez. Ten dash five dash eleven overnight parking. Uh, presentation will be done by Chief Perez. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I prepared a memo for the council explaining the reasons why should enforce two to five, uh, ordinance. You all have it. Public safety, street maintenance, neighborhood aesthetics, uh, parking ability. Not just for those who park there and stay there for the rest of the, the life of the vehicle, but for everybody else in the neighborhood. And it also deter crime. Also, something to point out, in, in the state of Illinois, I think it's like over ninety percent of the, all communities have some sort of a overnight parking rule. And because we're so close to Wisconsin, I looked into them too, and their figures are about the same. With that, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to entertain.
Any Alderman with questions on the overnight parking, uh, ordinance? What was that, ten dash what?
Ten dash.
Ten dash five. And that was the two to six AM parking.
But Alderman.
So, are we getting a lot of people's parking on the, uh, street right now?
So, now between two, two AM and six AM, I think what happened was one of your constituents came up and said that we should remove the ban.
Right.
The overnight parking ban. Um, the chair asked that, that we look into it and see the reasons why we should enforce it. So I gave council a list of the reasons. Also, those, those reasons are listed in most.
Yeah.
Communities around us. They give the same reasons as to why those overnight parking bans are in place.
So, is there any other questions on, on this? Uh, what is your general consensus, uh, moving forward for? Either relieving it as is?
Keep it like it is.
Keep it like it is.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Having looked over the information that was provided by the chief. Um, I, I see a lot of reasons to keep. The parking rules in place and not to remove, not to remove the overnight. Okay. Which is really for hours.
Mr. Chairman.
Alderman Coleman.
Um, I agree with the parking ban. I'm in the grants. Uh, but as far as alternate parking on both sides of the street. I know like on Sheldon Road and some of the, some of our tight streets in the second ward, like Park Avenue. Um.
That's all, so that's all ruled by ordinance?
Okay.
So you'd have to go back to the ordinance, look at the streets, and then make a decision if you wanna change those or not.
Well, correct. But what I'm asking was, what do you think about it? I, I, I don't. Would it be better? Cause in that way.
We can always get through, right? Uh, I, maybe that's a better question for the fire chief, just cause they have larger equipment. Our cars, we're gonna get through one way or another. Uh, the bigger equipment, I'm not so sure. And I'm not familiar with that, so I, I couldn't answer that.
Well, okay, let me clarify.
You may, as a truck driver, how, how tight is it to drive a truck through?
Well, no, not to keep overnight parking. That's not what I'm saying. On Sheldon Road, if you park on the same side of the street, the snowplows only clean one side of the street. Because it's always a car to park.
So, we changed, so, as far as snow is concerned, we changed that ordinance. If there's two inches of snow of more or more at any time. You have to remove your vehicles from the street, or else we ask you.
The ordinance would take care of that. Okay. Okay. Anyone else?
They're in the, in the entrance of the city.
Okay, uh, any other Alderman with any other questions on this matter?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate your follow-up on that. At this time, I'd like to request an adjournment for the Judiciary Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Alderman Smith, seconded by Alderman January, to adjourn the Judiciary Committee meeting and to leave the ordinance in effect. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
Aye.
At this time, the Judiciary Committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
I'd like to open up Economic Development, Planning and Zoning Committee. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman.
Present.
Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
We have one item on the agenda. Discussion of bid opening for seventeen thirty-seven Lincoln Avenue.
Good evening, Alderman. Uh, thank you, Chairman. Smith, uh, this is Taylor Wageron on the, the call here. Uh, I'm sorry, I can't be there in person tonight. Uh, I've got a sick family here at home, but, um. On the agenda here, yeah, seventeen thirty-seven Lincoln Street, actually. Uh, I believe Chief of Staff has, uh, the bids that have been, uh. Submitted to, uh, City Hall there before the deadline of five PM today. Just so you know, this opportunity was advertised in the Tribune for, uh, three weeks. Um, between the last time that the committee, uh, discussed this matter, it was also posted as an opportunity on the city's website. So with that, um, if we could bring those, uh, bids up for open.
Actually, uh, Taylor, I have them.
Okay.
And it was only one, one bid that was, uh, uh, given to us. And this is from, uh, Renew Communities. Uh. The. Uh, on behalf of Matthew. Five twenty-one LLC, the company Renew Communities. Um, the bid amount is seventeen thousand five hundred. So. That is what it is, and we've got a check for one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. I think that's the. Ten percent? So. At this time, uh, the one bid that came in, was that, maybe you guys can tell me, was that what they were?
The, the, the reserve price was two thousand.
Twenty-one hundred was the minimum.
Yeah.
Okay. So we got, uh. Seventeen thousand five hundred. Okay?
Okay.
Alright.
Any questions? Just for clarity, if the minimum was twenty-one, why are we doing the seventeen? Sorry?
Twenty-one hundred.
That was the.
Twenty-one thousand, twenty-one hundred.
Right.
That was, that was what the advertised minimum bid was.
Right.
They elected to bid seventeen thousand five hundred.
Seventeen thousand, not seventeen hundred.
No.
Seventeen. One thousand.
The one thousand seven hundred and fifty is the ten percent.
That's ten percent.
The required.
That's their.
That holds the, the bid.
Okay, there we go. I'm clear now. Thank you. Alderman. January.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm just like you, I was a little confused. Um, so, with this bid. Um, is there any way that, I believe there's, we can put a stipulation that. This needs to go to, when they redo the home, to, um. Go to a homeowner instead of making it a rental? Is there a way to do that in that stipulation?
In the board, in the board packet, the memo describes the stipulations that were advertised.
That it was in there that we want it for a.
It's.
Residential homeowner? Okay. Alright, perfect. Thank you.
Any more questions? Alright, can I get the motion to close Economic Development, Planning and Zoning Committee?
So moved. Second.
Uh, moved by Alderman Allen, seconded by Alderman Jackson. Roll call.
Alderman Jackson.
Aye.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Allen. Alderman Allen.
Aye.
Alderman Smith.
Aye.
Alderman Murphy.
Aye.
Alderman January.
I'd like to open the Human Resources Committee meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Jackson.
Present.
Alderman Coleman. Alderman Evans.
Here.
Alderman Allen.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Present.
Alderman Murphy.
Present.
Alderman January.
Okay, we have four items on the agenda. Um, the discussion of consulting agreement with comprehensive TTP LLC. Michael Peterson as Assistant Comptroller.
We're asking that that be tabled to the next committee meeting so we can address some questions about the contract that came up at the last minute.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much. Uh, second item is discussing, pardon me, discussion of MGT GovHR. Classification and compensation study proposal.
The staff is requesting that we take a look at the wage and compensation for the, uh, COS employees. The employees are not covered by a bargaining unit, just to keep current, so we're not playing catch-up. Five years from now, and we turn around and find out that we're five years behind everybody else. Um, it's strictly data gathering for the purpose of the council. To look at next year's salary schedule if it needs to be impacted one way or another. Uh, no raises come out of this until the council decides that, yes, we're gonna take this, no, we're not gonna take this. Yes, we're gonna implement it. It's, it's gathering of data, best way to describe it. Falls under the twenty thousand RFP threshold. We wanted to bring it to council. MGT you may be familiar with is GovHR. They were, they were acquired by the mothership of MGT. Uh, why is it to our benefit to use GovHR? Because they are known in the, in this, uh, in, known in Illinois. Um, what's really more important than anything else is they've already got the data. So they've done these for other communities, and they've already got the data, so we don't have to turn around and pay somebody from the outside. Outside the state or something to come in and look and start gathering data, which will cost us more money. So it's from an economic standpoint, it certainly serves us well. It'll give the council the data that they, uh, I know that they would feel pro- needed to make any decisions regarding salaries and raises. One thing I've heard from every single council member since I've been here is to make sure our employees are taken care of. Sometimes we can't do it all the way, all to the level that we want to. But there are, there's an opportunity here to at least look at the data and see, see where it brings us. Uh, as it relates to, uh, our non-represented employees.
Okay, and this, and just so that it's clear, CSO is for non-union employees.
Non, non, uh, non-represented, non-bargaining. No police, no fire, uh, yeah, SEIU, correct.
Alderman January.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, first of all, for any study, when was the last time this type of study has been done by the city? Do you know?
Yeah.
Several years? You would say more than five? Okay. Yeah, okay. And then, um, the. As we know, any study done, there's gonna be a cost, no matter what. Do you know what the cost would be for us to get this data from them?
They're gonna, when they do the study, we get the data. We own it, and it's, it's.
I understand that, but we're gonna have to pay for that.
Yeah, no, that, that's what the contract is. Sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
Five hundred.
Sixteen thousand five hundred.
Five hundred. Okay, I just wanna make sure it's heard by the citizens.
Yeah, and, and, uh, um, that's a great point you brought, uh, brought up, Alderman January. Four years, a lot of things have happened. We went from COVID to, uh, to an inflation, to a recession, to everything in left field.
That's why I was just curious when we last did it, because I thought we had done it recently, but it's been longer than I thought, so, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Alderman Coleman.
Um, did we go through item one, Mike Peterson?
Actually, there was a request or to table that item.
I, I, I wanna take the time to review the contract more closely.
Okay. I thought I missed it. I blanked, and I thought I missed it.
Other questions? Okay, um, I, I just wanna say that I think that, um, because of all the challenges that you mentioned, and I think all the challenges that we're aware of. If we're not able to stay at least, at least somewhat competitive, we will not attract talent. And we won't be able to retain talent, and if we can't do those two things, then we're not gonna be able to develop talent. So we, we need, I feel, to look at this. Um, from, from current, from current market, whatever you wanna say. Um, and if we really do wanna show our employees and anybody that we hope to attract to the city, that we, um. That those are our priorities. Then this, this to me is the way to do it. So. Generally speaking, is everybody comfortable with moving this to the regular agenda at the next meeting? Alright, great. Thanks. Alright, thanks. Um, the next item is, uh, discussion of the addition of a management analyst, Police A fifteen to the city's salary ordinance.
So I'm just gonna open this up a bit, and then, um, Assistant Chief Lund's gonna pick up the rest. So, um, in the council packet, I just wanted to go over, there were a few changes to the CSO. Um, the first is just basically on page four, and I highlighted that. Um, and that's just really to reflect what we're currently doing as far as our annual evaluations and, um, and. Our job applications and keeping those in employees' files. So it's just our standard operating procedure. It's just really putting it here and just recording. The next is on page thirteen, I just highlighted there. It's just increasing those wages to. Meet the fifteen dollar minimum wage is gonna start in January. So. So just basically, some of those, um, it lists there like. On-call firefighters, paramedics, seasonal labors, we really don't have anyone in those roles right now. But at least we're meeting with the minimum wage standards are enlisting it here. Okay, so the, the next is, um, our management analyst, which is working in the police department. We're looking to add that to the CSO to grade A fifteen. Um, we already have management analyst in that grade. Um, this basically, the intent of the role is to assist the police department as far as administrative role, as far as documenting and preserving. Um, any kind of evidence and recording that. They do have, um, they have. A room full of records that needs to be cleaned up and taken care of and addressed, and this role will actually do that. Um, and this is already in the budget. So, the Chief of Police put this in this year's budget for seventy thousand dollars, so it's already there. So I'm gonna hand it over to Assistant Chief Lund, and he can answer any specific questions related to the position.
Uh, Liz deserves all the credit. She did all the heavy lifting on this, so I just wanna make sure she gets the credit that she's owed. Any questions regarding the position regarding, um, management analyst, which is basically being evidence custodian and records disposal?
Go ahead, Alderman January.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um. How many analysts do we have? Just, this will be one analyst, or?
We currently have Fred Diaz. He's, uh, currently, uh, considered a management analyst. Uh, his role will be very different than this. This would be a person who'd be handling just evidentiary. Right now, we have about thirty-eight thousand pieces of evidence that need to be purged. We started off, well, long before I got here, with a evidence room that turned into a vault. They took over both of the Sally ports. It's now full of evidence. We now took over part of our jail cells and turned that into an evidentiary area. We've all now taken over a large part of Public Works Building over at the water towers, now, uh, been used for vehicles, long-term storage. We're a department, unfortunately, that takes care, it takes in a large amount of valuable evidence, firearms, projectiles, homicide evidence, so we are just inundated. Uh, most departments have taken the roles away from officers. They're more expensive, to be honest, to have someone doing that on a full-time basis and turn it into a civilian position. We're gonna be in a more cost-effective position.
So there is just one analyst then?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And who does that person report to?
Right now, it'll be me.
It would be yourself.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Smith.
Yes, sir.
Um, are we gonna have anything where like they, like make, become, things become surplus, and, um, after a period of time, it's discarded, put up for sale?
So there'll be multiple aspects to the evidence destruction disposal, certain things that could be, let's say they're abandoned property, um, turned over to the city. We will get court orders, and they could be disposed of, or could be sold at auction. Um, the other items, we have to get requests for firearms to be disposed of and destroyed. That'll be a very long process. We have several thousand firearms to go through, so. But yeah, excellent question. Some of those could result in revenue for the, for the city.
And such, okay, a smaller scale, bikes and things like that are stolen. But then, uh, even though that's a smaller thing, can those be like? Uh, even though that's a smaller thing, can those be like, over a period of time, given back to the community or how does, you know?
Yeah, so there are laws in place. A certain amount of time has to transpire. You have to do public notices for certain things like, let's say bicycles or, uh, abandoned property, like somebody, we, we recover a watch and, and no one, no one actually claims it. Uh, so there's several steps and then eventually they usually go to an auction process to the city.
All right. Um, have we had, uh, I don't know who to answer this question, but have we had anything like that? Where we've had auctions for the community for surplus stuff like that?
A long time ago. Go ahead, Alderman.
We get the cars. We get some surplus cars.
I think something that's good is what we can give back to the communities, things that have been confiscated and so forth. Thank you.
Understood, sir.
Okay, any other question? Okay. Thank you, Assistant Chief.
And I apologize. The next item on here is duplicate. That was my error for putting that on the council. I apologize for being too busy.
Okay, so actually then, just, and just to be clear then, um, Liz, so item four, that's still a separate item, correct?
No.
Or, no, item four is not the separate item. Item four is.
Should just be basically just removed. It's.
It, it, it is item three. It's the management analyst. Okay. All right, I just want to make sure we're clear. And, um, I think then that we can move this forward to the next council meeting? General consensus. Okay, that's wonderful. Thank you very much. All right, um, that's the last item on the agenda then. I'd like to get a motion to adjourn the Human Resources Committee meeting, please. Okay, moved by Alderman Smith, second by Alderman January. Um, can we just, all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, good night.
Happy holidays, everyone. Be safe.
They on Santa's good list.